Good evening. Being 7:00 PM, I'll call to order the McHenry County Board Regular Meeting of March 21st, 2023. Mr. Gotamaller is going to lead us in the pledge tonight.
Be blessed and stood by the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And for our invocation tonight, we have Pastor Brian Cope from Congregational Church in Algonquin. Mr. Cope? Is that here? Ms. Ness, would you like to lead us in a prayer tonight?
Can I do it from here?
You sure can.
So I would ask you all to stand quietly for a moment and center yourselves in the space of the Holy One. We call upon the Holy One to grant us wisdom, civility, collegiality, and the ability to stand with all of those that we represent on this county board, to honor the work that we do, and to work in the spirit of what is good for all of us and not just one of us. We pray for discernment and deliberation and calm, to be the leaders that you have called us to be, and to be for you, that which will make a difference. All of these things, we ask in the name of the One who created us all. Amen.
Thank you, Ms. Ness. Clerk, could you call the roll, please? Ms. Altough. Campbell. Gotamaller. Greeno. Hendricks. Kaminsky. Kearns. Kunkel. Meshes. Ness. Reinert. Sager. Shorten. Scala. Smith. Van Hoff. Von Bergen. Wegner.
Here.
Twenty-three present, one removed. Okay. I will entertain a motion to allow Ms. Wegner to join us remotely tonight. Ms. Meshes, seconded by Ms. Altough, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, welcome Ms. Wegner. I'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda. Mr. Sager, seconded by Ms. Meshes, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. And I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of previous meetings. Mr. Gotamaller, seconded by Mr. Scala. Any discussion or changes? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Move on to my remarks. Good evening, happy spring, one and all. I have a few items to share with you before we move on to tonight's agenda. On Monday, March 3rd, a new route change went into effect for Pace Bus Route 550 through Crystal Lake. The route no longer takes Main Street between Route 14 and Virginia Avenue, but now cuts down both thoroughfares instead. Three stops have been discontinued, but 12 more have been added, significantly increasing passenger access to shopping and residences. I believe this new route better serves McHenry's County's Pace users, and I want to thank Pace and the city of Crystal Lake for coming to this agreement. And I especially want to thank Erin Smith, McHenry County's representative, on the Pace Board of Directors for her leadership in the discussions. I have more good news regarding mass transit. Starting Monday, April 3rd, Metro will be adding 12 more trains to its weekday schedule on the Union Pacific Northwest Line serving McHenry County. This new schedule will provide service at least every half hour during the morning and evening rush hours, and hourly service at most stations during non-peak hours. With work on a multi-year rehab project set to start soon on the Kennedy Expressway, this will provide more riders with a much less stressful alternative commute. And finally, tonight, I'd like to take this opportunity during Women's History Month to thank the women on our county board, those who've been elected to our countywide elected positions, and those who've been appointed to head and manage our departments for everything you do, and for the ways that your talent, intellect, and experiences enrich us. We will be voting on a resolution tonight to recognize Women's History Month in McHenry County. And following that, it's very fitting that we'll be honoring the Johnsburg High School Skyhawks cheerleading team for its second straight state championship win. And that concludes my remarks for this evening. Do any members have comments tonight? Ms. Greeno?
Thank you. In 1981, Congress passed a proclamation declaring a week in March as Women's History Month. In 1987, Congress suspended it to the month of March. It is appropriate during this month to declare that the Battle of the Sexists has a winner: its men. But the battle is not over, it's a war. The 2023 International Women of Courage Award presented on International Women's Day by the U.S. Department of State was given to a biological male, Alba Ruata. USA Today awarded Woman of the Year to Biological Male, Rachel Levine, who barely beat out University of Pennsylvania biological male swimmer Leah Thomas. Leah notably competed at the collegiate level for three years as William Thomas on the men's swim team. Kara Dansky, a former ACLU lawyer and leftist, who may be the most outspoken feminist in America, writes, "If the general public could hear the arguments of rational, leftist, radical, feminist women," quote, "gender identity," quote, "would die." In the words of journalist and civil rights leader Ida B. Wells, "The way to right wrongs is to turn the light of truth on them." Thank you.
Mr. Kaminsky?
Yes, I just wanted to make an announcement, and there'll be more information coming. The American Legion Post 491 in McHenry is trying to ma-- going to have an awareness to the 22 veterans that commit suicide each day. So we're going to have a 22-mile rut sack that's going to be leaving McHenry, going up through Richmond, coming through Ringwood, Spring Grove, Johnsburg, and back to McHenry. That's going to be on the 28th of May. And more will be on their website for the American Legion, and hopefully here at the county, we'll be able to give more, to make more awareness of the su-- you know, for suicide prevention. Thank you.
Mr. Shorten?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to make note, as part of my responsibilities as liaison to the Gravel Advisory Council, I attended a meeting on March 8th. The purpose of the Gravel Advisory Council is to provide a forum for the county, township, and municipalities to discuss mine-related issues impacting their communities. It provides educational and inform-- informational platform for industry and government to communicate concerns, solutions, and positive contributions while fostering a cooperative growth environment as neighbors living and working together. Ron Raup, who is the co-chair representing the aggregate producers, was re-elected to another term, while Riley Township Supervisor Kathy Schnabel, who represents the township, municipalities, and the county, continues to serve her term, which she was elected to two years ago. Jack Peace, who's the CEO of Super Aggregates, provided an overview of aggregate mines, the impact on the county, and the forthcoming challenges with the number of mines being greatly diminished in the county. I have copies of that overview that I'll be getting out to members in the next week. The council is in early planning stages of developing a tour of many of the local mines, which will help county and municipal officials better understand the value of the gravel mines to the county. The tour date is pending, but it's currently being targeted for early September. I did want to make a note that today marks the third anniversary of the governor's shelter in place order. As you recall, three years ago, I think none of us can forget, March 13th, schools, public and private were closed. And then, following the revelry of the St. Patrick's Day weekend, all restaurants and bars in the state were closed on March 15th. And on May 21st, the governor issued an executive order shuttering all non-essential businesses for 15 days. That order was subsequently extended multiple times until May 29th. It affected public transportation, the ability for people to attend churches, mosques, and synagogues, and, as you recall, outdoor parks for children were closed with yellow caution tape. We need to remember that people-- a lot of people died from COVID-19. We also need to remember that the continued dramatic impacts that were the reaction to the vi-- to that virus continue to have on our society. Everyone was affected. Children across the country lost years in their educational and psychological development. Prosperous businesses that thrived before the pandemic were closed, with many still struggling to stay afloat. Many experienced significant impacts to their income or saw their jobs disappear. The impacts on mental health are beyond measure. The economy is still reeling, benefited by supply chain, inflation, increased lending rates, and as a result of that, right now, we have banks that are failing. While we're many years away from being able to accurately judge the decisions of elected officials' actions, we need to work to understand what caused the pandemic, and we need to evaluate the data that influenced those decisions. At last week's COW, there was a discussion regarding a dramatic disparity between the numbers of COVID deaths in the county, between the coroner's data and the McHenry County Department of Public Health, driven, in my opinion, by the Illinois Department of Public Health guidance to the Department of Health. Respectfully, given the impacts of the governor's reaction to the epidemic, I think it's a responsibility of those spores to get to the bottom of the disparity, understand what the true impact was to the people living in this county. And so we make sure if we encounter this type of situation again, that our reaction is proportionate to the challenges that are put before us. Lastly, I'll finish on an up note. One thing that I'm real happy about that's re-evolved the past three years is we're now allowed to laugh again. I happened to attend the Vixen in McHenry County a couple months ago. They have free comedy nights on Wednesday evenings, and they bring in, I think, five comics from the city of Chicago. They're kind of testing their material, no admission to get in, and it's a lot of fun. So I'd encourage you, if you have time on Wednesday evenings, 8 o'clock, to the young kids over there, it's 21 years and older, so sorry. But get out and have a good chuckle. Thank you.
Ms. Altough?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. After great consult with staff, I am happy to report that the first Senior Services Grant Meeting will occur on Friday, April 28th, probably sometime around 8:30, 9 o'clock in the morning, but please mark your calendars. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further member comment, we'll move on to special recognition. I'll entertain a motion to approve Item 9A, proclamation declaring April 10th through 14th, 2023 as Community Development Week in McHenry County. Ms. Altough makes the motion, Mr. Smith seconds, and Ms. Ness will read the proclamation.
Proclamation declaring April 10th through the 14th as Community Development Week in McHenry County. Whereas, through bipartisan legislation, Congress passed and President Gerald Ford signed into law the National Community Development Act of 1974. And whereas, the National Community Development Association is a nonprofit organization which represents cities and counties that administer U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development HUD funding across the United States. And whereas, this HUD funding includes the Community Development Block Grant Program, CDBG, the Home Investment Partnerships Program, HOM, and the Continuum of Care Funding, COC, and the Emergency Solutions Grants Program, ESG. And whereas, the National Community Development Associated initiated National Community Development Week in 1986 to give local attention to the numerous outstanding projects and accomplishments occurring nationwide through these HUD programs. And whereas, these projects assist local governments in achieving high-quality, locally-responsive programs for making communities better places in which to live, particularly for low and moderate-income people. And whereas, McHenry County is a grantee of CDBG, COC, and HOM funding, and acts as the collaborative applicant for ESG funding. And whereas, McHenry County is also a grantee of the United States Department of the Treasury, assisting local residents by preventing homelessness. And whereas, the Community Development Division locally administers the Senior Services Grant Program and the LED Safe Homes Program. And whereas, the Community Development Division is responsible for administering over $50 million in grant funding in its current five-year plan, working with the community to select well-qualified projects that provide substantial benefits to the residents of McHenry County, thereby creating an enriched and vibrant community. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by this county board of McHenry County, Illinois, that April 10 through 14, 2023, is hereby proclaimed to be Community Development Week in McHenry County, and be it further proclaimed that the county clerk is hereby authorized to distribute a certified copy of this proclamation to the National Community Development Association, to the county administrator, to the county community development administrator, and that it is spread upon the records of the McHenry County Board, dated at Woodstock, Illinois, this 24th day of March, AD 2023.
Thank you, Ms. Ness. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. I will now entertain a motion to approve the proclamation declaring March 2023 as Flood Awareness Month in McHenry County. Ms. Greeno, seconded by Ms. Meshes, and Mr. Smith will read the proclamation.
Thank you. Proclamation declaring March 2023 as Flood Awareness Month in McHenry County. Whereas, McHenry County has experienced severe weather in the past in the form of extreme rainfall resulting in flooding, and this flooding has caused damage and flood losses to homes and buildings in all areas, whether they are high-risk special flud-- flood hazard areas or low-to-moderate risk flood zones. And whereas, during flooding events, the McHenry County experiences social, economic, and environmental consequences of damage to property and infrastructure caused by flood disasters. And whereas, McHenry County is a participant in the National Flood Insurance Program and the NFIP Community Rating System, CRS, that provides residents with the opportunity to protect themselves against flood loss through the purchase of flood insurance at an up-to-20% discount on premium rates. And whereas, McHenry County is currently updating the countywide natural hazards mitigation plan, which is how the county and other municipalities communicate our natural hazard risks, including flooding, and our communities reduce risk throughout the county. And whereas, McHenry County continues to prepare for potential flood events through flood mitigation efforts, setting higher regulatory standards to reduce flood risk and potential flood damage to property, enforcement of floodplain regulation, emergency preparedness exercises, public awareness, and education activities. And whereas, residents are encouraged to observe Flood Awareness Month by preparing their homes and families for flood by reviewing flood safety guidance, including the term "Turnaround, Don't Drown," available on the FEMA and McHenry County websites. And whereas, residents are encouraged to review their flood risk and purchase flood insurance as damage from a flood is not normally covered from a standard homeowner's policy. And whereas, the reduction of loss of life and property damage can be achieved when appropriate flood preparedness, control, and mitigation measures are taken before a flood. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by this county board of McHenry County, Illinois, that March 2023 is hereby proclaimed to be Flood Awareness Month in McHenry County, and be it further proclaimed that the county clerk is hereby authorized to distribute a certified copy of this proclamation to the Director of the Department of Planning and Development, the Planning and Development Water Resource Manager, the Director of Emergency Management McHenry County, the County Administrator, and that is spread upon the records of the McHenry County Board, dated at Woodstock, Illinois, this 21st day of March, AD 2023.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. I'll entertain a motion to approve the proclamation supporting or promoting the development of agriculture for the benefit of McHenry County and all its residents. Mr. Kearns, seconded by Mr. Smith, and Ms. Von Bergen will read the proclamation.
Thank you, Chairman. McHenry County is fortunate to be home to so many diverse farms. No one is more committed to protecting the land than America's farmers. I'd also like to welcome the group of FFA-- FFA members in the audience. They are the next generation of leaders who will change the world. So proclamation supporting and promoting the development of agriculture for the benefit of McHenry County and all its residents. Whereas, Illinois is home to more than 71,000 farms, 96% of which are family-owned, and a third of which will include livestock. And whereas, McHenry County accounts for 881 of those farms. And whereas, agriculture supports 5,395 jobs, which accounts for an estimated 4% of total jobs in the county. And whereas, agriculture and related industries generate total sales or output is estimated at $1.299 billion. And whereas, farm property provides 3.4% of taxable value, which provides services to residents. And whereas, Illinois farmers support the food security of our citizens, the international pandemic displayed the importance of American food systems, processing, and supply chain weaknesses. And whereas, new livestock development accounts for additional jobs, creating additional economic growth within the county. And whereas, farmers are dedicated to caring for their animals in ways that also benefit the land, using tools and technology to better manage soil nutrients, water runoff, and air quality on the farm. Farmers are using fewer natural resources and reducing their carbon footprint while producing more food. And whereas, farmland is a finite resource that is vital to agriculture, food production, and the economic well-being of our county. And whereas, farmers in Illinois face multiple layers of regulation involving state and federal agencies, providing a comprehensive, robust regulatory program for all farms, including those raising livestock. And whereas, data and information from state regulatory agencies demonstrates environmental issues from agriculture are an extremely rare occurrence. And whereas, the county recognizes the value agriculture contributes to our county, and the rural way of life is the backbone of our country. Efforts should be made to accommodate future success of the rural community. Now therefore, be it proclaimed, the McHenry County Board acknowledges and supports agriculture within our county. The jobs created, taxes generated, technologies embraced, and environmental practices implemented by farmers make agriculture a valuable industry within our county. And be it further proclaimed, the County of McHenry elected board and county staff will work to support and promote the development of agriculture for the benefit of our county and all its residents, dated at Woodstock, Illinois, this 21st day of March, 2023.
Thank you, Ms. Von Bergen. All in favor, say aye.
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 Against, motion carries. Would the FFA members like to come up and get a photo with the board? Come on up.
All right, there we go. Awesome, and thank you very much.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the proclamation recognizing March 2023 as Women's History Month. Ms. Meshes, seconded by Ms. Altough, and Ms. Campbell will read the proclamation.
Whereas, our American history is rich with amazing stories of strong, courageous, and brilliant women of every race, class, and ethnic background who have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of our nation in countless ways. And whereas, American women have played and continue to play a critical economic, cultural, and social role in every sphere of life by constituting a significant portion of the labor force working inside and outside of the home. And whereas, American women have played a unique role throughout history by providing the majority of the volunteer labor force. And whereas, American women were particularly important in the establishment of early charitable, philanthropic, and cultural institutions. And whereas, American women have served our country courageously in the military. And whereas, despite these achievements, women in American history have been overlooked. Still, women today are determined to support, celebrate, and empower each other to create a more just and fair society for everyone. Whereas, American women have been leaders, not only in securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in the abolitionist movement, the emancipation movement, and the industrial labor movement, the civil rights movement, and other movements which create a more fair and just society for all. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the McHenry County Board that March is designated as Women's History Month, encouraging the people of McHenry County to observe March as Women's History Month with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. And be it further proclaimed, the 2023 theme of Women's History Month is celebrating women who tell stories, and we celebrate the stories of women throughout history that continue to be told and those that too often have gone untold, dated at Woodstock, Illinois, this 21st day of March, AD 2023.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. I'll now entertain a motion to approve the proclamation honoring the Johnsburg Skyhawks cheerleading team for its 2023 state championship win. Ms. Altough, seconded by Mr. Gotamaller, and Mr. Kaminsky will read the proclamation.
Honoring the Johnsburg Skyhawk cheerleading team for its 2023 state championship win. Whereas, Johnsburg High School won the state championship title February 4 at the Illinois High School Association Competitive Cheerleading State Finals. And whereas, this is the second consecutive year that Johnsburg Skyhawk captured the state title. And whereas, the Johnsburg Skyhawks won the small division with a score of 93.83 points out of a possible 100. And whereas, the championship win was the team's fifth consecutive top-10 finish. And whereas, the Johnsburg Skyhawks traveled to Dallas two weeks prior to the IHSA finals and won the advanced small varsity division. the advanced small varsity division titled at the National Cheerleading Association High School National Competition. And whereas the continued hard work, dedication, preservation, and are an inspiration to McHenry County and women's sports. And we are immensely proud of their accomplishments. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by this county board of McHenry County, Illinois, that the members of the board congratulate Johnsburg Skyhawk Cheerleading Team and Coach Matt Drawes on their IHSA state championship title. And be it further proclaimed that this proclamation be spread upon the records of the McHenry County Board, and that the county clerk is authorized to distribute certified copies to the county administrator and Johnsburg High School as a sign of our respect and esteem, dated at Woodstock, Illinois, this 21st day of March, AD 2023.
Thank you, Mr. Kaminski. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Cheerleading team, would you come on up?
All right, everybody. One, two, three. Skyhawks.
Oh, Johnsburg. Okay, we'll move on to zoning petitions. Do any members have an item they'd like to remove from the zoning consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the zoning consent agenda. Mr. Smith, seconded by Mr. Scala. Clerk, could you open the voting, please? Voting is open. Have all voted who wish? Ms. Wagner, how would you like to be?
Yes.
Motion carries. We will move on to public comment. First one up is James Dixon. Just a reminder, you have three minutes for public comment.
Thank you. James Dixon, resident. Wow, does this feel great. I feel so alive and free. It gives me a power I never knew. The thrill and excitement tears through my body. It keeps me up and moving. These are reasons drug users usually give when asked why they use drugs at all. But they were not uttered by drug users, rather from users of automatic fire rifles, as seen on YouTube videos and Instagram posts. If you consider this preposterous, be aware that thrill-seeking is a recognized psychological, psychological diagnostics disorder that is similar to drug use and physical stimuli, and often self-destructive and harmful to others. This is not just based on social media evidence, but I have witnessed gun range activity where shooters show abnormal exuberation during and after firing automatic rifles. Once I overheard a couple of young men who happened to be firing such an automatic rifle say, "This'll teach them B-I-T-C-H-E-S." I mentioned this outburst to a range operator and later to a local police officer. Both had a similar reaction responding that people just blow off steam. Last time I was here, I urged you to hold a referendum or a civilian negotiation regarding a firearms policy. You ignored that. Now I can only assume you are enablers of an under-recognized but observable drug-seeking behavior. You can make more safe drug harbors, or as they may be called, firing rages, or you can look at red flag laws as an intervention method before a problem gets worse. We already hold teachers accountable to ignoring signs of child abuse or child endangerment. Why can't we hold gun range operators accountable if they ignore danger signs of psychologically damaged people or outspoken threats? Thank you.
Matthew Radzinski?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Board, for listening to me here. I'm a McHenry County citizen, and I also work for evac chairs and evacuation specialist. I'm here today to address two points. The first one is a big public safety concern that I have, as one in six people have what's considered reduced mobility in an emergency situation when they're going to evacuate and could need assistance getting out of a building. And that's why it was extremely concerning to me when I spoke with an assisted living facility here in McHenry. They asked me to not tell you who they were and to keep their name private in that aspect. Had an inspection from one of the county fire inspectors. They came in and told them, "Do not use evacuation devices such as chairs, sleds, and that sort of thing," which was extremely concerning because they said, "Wait for us to come and get you." Now, with that, I wanted to see, first off, if there was a way that I could schedule a meeting to talk to the fire inspectors and the city council, or the, sorry, county council, that handles the safety division here. I wanted to see if I could do that so I could show and demonstrate the importance of having those evacuation equipment in place, the number and countless number of lives that we have saved over the past 40-plus years, including, everybody knows, 9/11. We had 120 chairs in the Trade Towers, and we saved countless number of lives. We're featured in the museum there. I am talking and asking to demonstrate the importance of why those sorts of devices should be not just recommended, but a requirement for not just county buildings, but any building within the county that has multiple stories to it. Thank you.
Jeffrey Dahl?
You will have to forgive my unusual walking. I've been not myself and not feeling that great. I'm here to bring a, at least to light, a particular theory that I have involving the Affordable Care Act. Now, full stop, I understand that this is not the room that implemented that or has anything to do with that. I've spoken myself to our state senators, to the state assembly, involving an item that I myself, on my own accord through my own observation, may be a conundrum with the effectiveness of the Affordable Care Act, and I'm bringing this to the attention of all elected officials at every particular position across the entire state. When an individual goes in for medical care, no matter what that particular position is, what that procedure is, there seems to be a reoccurring pattern I myself have gone through for the past three years with the Northwestern Medical System located here in Woodstock. A reoccurring pattern of going in for an appointment, insisting that there's something wrong, having the doctor sit back and tell you that everything is okay. I'm sure everybody's been through this situation before. I'm not the only one who's been through this. But there seems to never be a conclusion or an agreement between patient and doctor, especially if they're on a community health care plan, in order to get to a particular end, to a solution, or to a finality to complete the care that is supposed to be implemented for whatever particular procedure that they're going through. It is almost as if individuals who are on community health care, and I know this is going to be completely out there. I have absolutely no evidence, just based on what my eyes have seen. There seems to be this reoccurring used car salesman pattern of you bring the car in, you know you took care of it, everything is fine, but that mechanic, he's going to tell you, "No, there's something very wrong here. You have to come back and take care of something else." The patient, when they are given a diagnosis and they are told that something is wrong, they are given a referral to a health care facility, to a professional, to whatever particular ends that they have to go to to take care of themselves, to a place that either does not accept their insurance, the doctor doesn't even exist anymore, the clinic itself has become a Culvers. And when you try and go into Culvers and take care of your teeth or something like that, no one's able to help you out. So it becomes incredibly frustrating. Now, I myself am the only individual who has experienced this. And I know the next question is going to be, okay, well, thank you for bringing this to light. What can the McHenry County Council do regarding this particular end? I am concerned that if future hospitals or health networks attempt to monopolize an impoverished sector that doesn't make money, that doesn't produce revenue, by keeping them sick and keeping them on community health care by giving them half-truths and misinformation and essentially not getting them-
Subline your comments, please.
Oh, absolutely, sir. Essentially, at the end of the day, the Affordable Care Act appears to be creating more appointments and not getting to an end for the patients. I'm asking my council to please consider this in future decisions when it comes to hospitals and health care networks within our county. There is a very strong contention of monopolization that is almost akin to a type of communist type of organization of putting together a hospital. Very dangerous. Thank you very much, sir, and thank you.
David Kautowski?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. How's everybody doing? My name is David Kautowski, and I'm the president of Internet Freedom for McHenry County. Internet Freedom for McHenry County is a nonprofit organization advocating for better internet in our county. Specifically, we're advocating for high-speed, reliable, affordable internet access through a free market that is either community-owned or privately-owned. Better infrastructure is desperately needed in this county, and investing in high-speed, reliable, and affordable internet access would benefit our county, especially the farming community. And the high-speed, reliable, and affordable internet access will bring jobs, more stores, automated farming, which means more profits, and better transportation and more, or even flood management, for that matter. So Internet Freedom from McHenry County has collected over 1,200 responses from around the county, and this is what your own neighbors are saying about their internet experience. So Paul P. of Union Incorporated says mesh networks are cheap, low-maintenance infrastructure that should be part of municipal planning, like roads and subdivisions, and paid through property taxes with a use maintenance fees paid by the users, as in use of public water and electric supply. Teresa W. of Spring Grove Incorporated, "We live in a subdivision that does not offer cable. We've been told that there are not enough houses for them to put in the wiring, et cetera. The subdivision has many empty lots. We lived here for three years, and our only options are DSL or fixed wireless. That means the fastest speed is 25 megabits for fixed wireless, or 12 megabits a second for DSL. We would love to have more options, especially reliable cable service." Dan N. of Hebron Incorporated, "What I, my kids, spouse, and guests do online should be private. We should not be subjected to ads or solicitation from anyone. We pay for our own vehicle. We should not be tracked on where we go and spend time." And so, and Mark W. of Spring Grove Incorporated, "Mediacom is too high-priced, and you get too little for your money." In summary, and I've said this in previous ones, in the previous meetings, is that I would encourage the county board to develop a comprehensive broadband plan, because it's never too early to start planning. The county's been in charge of this, working on this for about 10 years, and I have to ask the farming community, is your internet any better? So, but thank you for your time.
Dan Ziller?
Thank you. Dan Ziller, Huntley, Illinois. I'm here as the McHenry County Farm Bureau President tonight, and I just want to say that today being National Agriculture Day, it was a fitting tribute to have the county board support our resolution for agriculture in the county. And on behalf of all of us that are involved in the agriculture industry currently here in the county, and those coming up the ranks behind us, as we have represented here with our Future Farmers of America Officer Team from the Marengo Chapter, dressed in their fine FFA dress, which I wish I could fit in mine these days, but I don't, we want to say thank you.
Okay, that concludes public comment for tonight. New and unfinished business. I'll entertain a motion to approve item 13A, Resolution Authorizing Ordinance Number 23-1024 of the McHenry County Conservation District's 2024 fiscal year budget as provided for in Public Act 91-629. Ms. Althoff, seconded by Ms. Campbell. Any discussion? Seeing none. Clerk, could you open the voting, please?
It's open.
Voting is open. Have all voted who wish? Ms. Wagner, how would you like us to record you?
Yes.
Motion carries. I'll entertain a motion to approve the item 13B, Resolution to Adopt a 2023 Legislative Program for McHenry County. Ms. Althoff, seconded by Ms. Von Bergen. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. On to item number 14, Appointments. I'll entertain a motion to approve the recommendation for appointment to the McHenry County Public Transportation Advisory Committee and the Regional Transportation Authority as of March 21, 2023. Mr. Gotamaller, seconded by Mr. Shorten. Any discussion? Seeing none. Clerk, could you open the voting, please? Voting is open. Have all voted who wish? Ms. Wagner, how would you like to be recorded?
Yes.
Motion carries. Dr. Sager?
Thank you, Chairman. I just want to express sincere appreciation to you for the nomination for the McHenry County Representative, once again, to the RTA Board, and certainly my gratitude to each of my colleagues on the county board. The RTA, as you are aware, is responsible for the oversight financially with regards to all of the service agencies, organizations. Chairman has already made some fine comments this evening about some improvements in metra and pace, and we're grateful for that. I want to assure this county board that the RTA, as well as all the service agencies board, have continued to work very, very, very hard throughout the pandemic period of time to address the individual needs that were time-specific as we went through that COVID process, but also as we look to come out of it and how we future the services for our residents across the region. The fact of the matter is, of course, that this requires a significant amount of planning, because we all know that lots and lots and lots of what we consider to be routine process procedures in the past have changed dramatically. It has for this board, and it certainly has for the RTA and its agency boards as well. So I, again, want to say I thank you very, very much, and I pledge to you that I will work extremely hard to best represent McHenry County and its residents relative to the transit services for our residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Item number 15, do... Ms. Campbell, I'm sorry.
I'm so sorry. I think you turned, just as I was turning it on.
I'm so sorry. I think you turned, just as I was turning it on. Just real quickly, two things for liaison report. I just wanted to remind people that this Thursday at 6 o'clock is our Regional Planning Commission's meeting, so anyone interested in hearing what we're talking about, please join us. The other meeting, the liaison to the Emergency Management Agency, they'll be holding their natural hazard mitigation meeting Thursday, the 30th, from 1:00 to 5:00. Again, we would like to, this will be the last opportunity that any agency in the county that would like to participate, that it would allow them to get mitigation dollars at the back end. They need to jump in at this meeting, or they will not be eligible. So if you know of anybody in townships or any communities that are not currently participating, please encourage them to do so, especially our townships. I think it's a little bit harder due to limited staff, but we'd love to see them there. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Nice?
The-
I got you, Kelly. Sorry.
The McHenry County Housing Authority is looking for a buyer for the building on Seminary Avenue. I think they're going to lower the price to try to be done with that. But most significantly, they've removed the homeless preference from their Section 8 waiting list, mostly because that preference, what happens is that people that have been on that list for three years never get to the top, and so they thought to create some fairness for people that have been on the list for a long time, they are removing that homeless preference, which should open up the list better, though the stock of available Section 8 housing is pretty static. Also, they're preparing for the Treasury subsidy for people who are paying over 50% of their income to housing to end shortly. That will throw about 3,300 families in some significant stress, so they've been talking about that. I know I'm not an official liaison to the COC, but I did want to say they are doing their strategic planning right now, and they are actually looking at targeted funding, addressing gaps in that. And I thought it was sort of appropriate, because today is, we proclaim Community Development Day, and they do the CDBG and the Emergency Shelter Grant. As I wanted to recognize that they're doing that, and to thank the county staff, which has been very, very helpful to the COC.
Thank you. Ms. Wagner?
Thank you, Chairman Bueller. I apologize for not being there this evening. I just wanted to let everybody know and invite them to an open house for the Workforce Network and the ETSB. It's Thursday morning from 9:00 to 12:00. Just come out to 500 Russell Court, and you can check out the facilities. They're beautiful facilities and everything that they do for our community. And when we come to the point, I do have two resolutions I have to abstain for. Thank you.
Mr. Kearns?
Yes. The trip, for the metro trip going downtown, that some of the board members were going to participate on, has been rescheduled. The tentative date right now they're looking at is May 24th. It's been scheduled because our tour host, Director Kohler, actually fell and broke his leg last week. So this is a trip that any board member is welcome to go to if there's room, and I know I went on it the last one, and this is a trip worth going to, to see where our money is, the money is being spent and how it operates. It's a very good trip to go on. I encourage all of you to take the time and do it, and May 24th, please contact Scott Hennings for that, if you'd like to go on that. Thank you.
I agree. Highly recommended. Don't miss it. Any other committee chair, Mr. Reinert?
Yeah, just for the liaison for the MCCD, obviously, we approved their budget this year. We worked pretty hard on that, and I thank the board for approving that. I did support it this year. Also, September 9th, they have a fundraiser at Sofal Prairies outside of Harvard. It's going to be a fundraiser with another organization. I'll have more information on that in the upcoming months as they get it to me. Also, I have, there was a presentation on their land acquisitions in the last 10 years or so, which was pretty informative. They have really cut down their spending on buying land, which I always was a little leery of, that they bought the land before they could actually service it and afford to upkeep it, but they've been doing a really good job. And next month, I'll share the information of what they've done with land acquisitions and also deeded properties to them, so, thank you.
Ms. Von Bergen?
The Naturally McHenry County Board will be getting together tomorrow for our strategic planning session. We are hoping to build on last year's successes. I hope you are all getting and reading over the emails that you should be getting in your email. Hopefully, they're not in your spam folder. But I do suggest that you also download the app that is available and try the many challenges that we've put together. There's a Library Lovers Expedition, another Discover McHenry County, but I was kind of hoping to try and get to the McHenry County Craft Beverage Trail, so be sure to check all those out.
Thank you. Ms. Greenow?
There's an Ethics Commission meeting this Thursday at 3:00, and don't miss it because they're very infrequent, and make sure to do your training.
Thank you. Any others? Seeing none, we'll move on to the routine consent agenda. Do any members have items they'd like to remove from the routine consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll entertain-
I do.
Oh, Ms. Wagner?
Sorry about that. I just have to abstain from 16.0B.2.4 and 16.0B.2.7.
I would just note it. Thank you. Okay, so I will entertain a motion to approve the routine consent agenda. Mr. Gotamaller, seconded by Mr. Kearns. Clerk, could you open the voting, please? Voting is open. Have all voted who wish? Ms. Wagner, how would you like to be shown?
Yes.
Motion carries. Onto ordinances, we have one for review, the ordinance adopting a fee schedule for the Department of Planning and Development. Other than that, Pete, you got a report for us tonight?
I do. Just real quick, as I gave you the big written one on Thursday, but I did want to let the board know that Senators Severson and Representative Sonoski are going to be over here on Monday afternoon, kind of getting to know the county a little bit more, and the Conservation District is going to be a part of that meeting as well, because they're anxious to get to know them a little bit more in their new turf. I had a public comment this evening about fiber, and I had wanted you guys to know that the first round of Phase 3 of Connect Illinois applications are due at the end of this month, on March 31st. And we confirmed today that we've got two private entities competing in that first round. There should be 10 rounds in Phase 3, each round every quarter, but they're getting out, you know, the two private firms we've been working with for a year now are putting their hat in there, and we're going to go after what could be north of $30 million. And the maps we've seen, they will make your jaw drop in terms of the number of rural homes that are getting directly connected, if this can come to fruition the way we, you know, so we reference, we reference the ag community. It's like hardwired to darn near every farm there is, so it's exciting. It's exciting, and we'll be keeping track of that and keeping you up to date as that moves ahead. I also wanted to thank Cheryl Chuku, your HR Director, publicly. She led three classes in the last 10 days or so on what we're calling stay interviews. It's a new personnel management kind of technique of, hey, we've got to work on retention, and we've got to work on keeping the good people we have here. So she led about 80 of our managers through a two-hour course on that. We bought the books and read them ahead of time, but I was proud of what Cheryl did there. I was also proud this evening that Carrie Weiss and I were able to go down to the Mental Health Board for their 5 o'clock finance meeting, and Leonetta and Connie had asked much of the Mental Health Board to come down and listen to our presentation, Carrie's presentation, my discussion, on the mental health levy and where it fits into our larger levy. And it was convenient. Mike was over at the building for an MCEDC executive meeting, so Mike was able to come down and be part of that discussion as well, so it all fit together well, but I was proud of what we pulled off.
Melissa?
Also proud of her. Yesterday, yesterday, we had our every other month managers' meetings that Shailin puts together. We had about 15 village managers meeting down in Crystal Lake City Hall. And I wanted, I wanted Melissa to kind of talk about the Health Department's five-year plan and the role that municipalities can play in helping bring that five-year plan to, you know, some success. And, you know, when we adopted that plan, or when the Board of Health adopted the plan and was presented this past October, there were some questions about, well, what did you get done last time? And, you know, there was, you know, some squishy answers, but I know that our municipalities can help us get over the finish line, and I know that they're doing things that can help us get some points there, so that's good. Melissa also has for you this evening, or tomorrow morning, kind of, as you referenced earlier, Mike, the process, you know, the process that our county health department, as prescribed by the state, uses in making determinations on COVID-related deaths. That won't answer all the questions, but it will give you, you'll have it. It's two pages, very clear, in black and white, the process that that group is making and using decision-making on COVID-related deaths. Finally, two more things related to CMAP. We heard a lot of discussion tonight about RTA, about four different times. Chairman Bueller and I, and our own transportation genius, Scott Hennings, are going to be going to the CMAP Chairman's Meeting on Thursday morning at DePage County in Wheaton. And the main topic of those seven county chairs is going to be the RTA, the fiscal cliff, you know, what changes are going to need to be made or anticipated, you know, to get that ship right, and all the funding screams that are coming in, you know, to fund public transportation, and, you know, what kind of adjustments we have to make. I know that's been the subject that, Jim, you've been interested in in the Transportation Committee, and this will be a good next step in that discussion. Then last thing, CMAP. I think you probably all had the invitation, but April 5th, CMAP is going to be the focus of the Macog Dinner, and it's going to be in Crystal Lake, at the Hickory Hills facility. CMAP is funding the renting of the facility, and it's going to be kind of a buffet working dinner. We are going to talk, Shailin and I, for a good 10 minutes or so about her position and the success we've realized there with our shared services, and then CMAP is going to have about six or seven staff members there to kind of guide us in through some discussions on CMAP and what they're doing for our community. Your representative, Carolyn Schofield, is going to be there as well, and we're going to have some state representatives there as well, so hope you can make it. Thank you.
Thanks, Pete. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. Kearns, seconded by Ms. Greenow. All in favor, say aye. Against? Have a good night.